Okay. All right, so this is the public hearing. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First and foremost, I'm going to read the checklist statement that we read before every one of our meetings. I don't know that we necessarily need to do it for this, but better safe than sorry. So as Chair of the Timberland Regional School District Budget Committee Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. There is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting by audio and video utilizing a Zoom webinar platform, where all members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and view by logging on to www.timberland.net/zoombudcom. B) We have given notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing this meeting. This information has been provided along with the agenda and posted to the board's website at www.timberland.net. We have provided- C) We have provided a phone number for the public to alert this public body during the meeting. If there are problems with access, that phone number is (603) 382-6541, extension 3955. D) We will adjourn the meeting and reschedule if the public is unable to access the meeting. Additionally, all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. We will begin the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When members state their presence, they must also state whether there is anyone in the room with them during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. And with that, I'm going to ask Jalise to do a roll call. And can you do that for the Budget Committee and the School Board, Jalise?
Sure. I'm going to start with the Budget Committee. Kristy O'Clair.
I am here, and I'm alone in the room, but there are other people in my house.
Peter Bealow.
I am here. I'm alone in this room, but there's another person in the house.
Brian Boyle.
I am here. I'm alone in the room. There are other family members in the house.
Steven Finnegan. Kathleen Gorman. Julie Hammond.
I am here, but I am not- I'm in a room by myself, but I'm- there are other people in the household.
Michael Moscola.
I think he's here.
I think he's on mute.
You're on mute, Mike.
I'm mute. I am here, and I am alone in the house.
Todd McCormick.
I am here. I'm alone in the room, but there are other family members in the house.
Sue Sherman.
I'm here in my office, but there are other people in the house.
And Phil Sherwood.
I am here. I'm alone in the room. There are other members of the family in the house.
And now the School Board. Brian Boyle.
Here again. I'm still here. I'm alone in the room, and there are other family members in the house.
Lee Doobie.
I am here. I am alone in the house.
Kimberly Farah.
I'm here. I'm alone in the room. There are other members in the household present.
Barbara Casiska.
Ishka. Present, alone in the house.
Sheila Lowes.
I am here and alone in the house.
Sarah Macamore.
I am here. I am alone in the room. There are other members of my family in the house.
Sean O'Neill.
Sean's going to come in late.
Kristen Savage.
I am here. I am alone in the room, but there are other members within my household.
And Jennifer Silva.
I am here alone on the call this time.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, great. Thanks, Jalise. Okay, so we'll go ahead and get this public hearing started then. Jeff, if you want to pull up- or I'm sorry, not Jeff. I think it's Ken, right?
Yes, I got you, Todd. I'm your power remote tonight. Does everybody see that okay?
Yes. Okay, so welcome to the 2021-22 public hearing. This is a first. We're doing this all remote. Normally, we'd be in the pack with the School Board and the Budget Committee on the stage. And that being said, we would usually have some handouts. We would do this PowerPoint on the big screen behind all of us. And then we would have a handout. That handout is available to anyone in the public who would like to go to timberland.net under Budget and Warrant Public Hearing Information. And what you have there is, you know, more of the details of the high-level budget process that I'm going to go over. And so if you could take us to the next slide, Ken. The mission statement of the Timberland Regional School District is to engage all students in challenging and relevant learning opportunities emphasizing high aspirations and personal growth. Next slide, please. The Budget Committee is made up of the following folks. I'll just leave it there for a second instead of reading them all off. And I think everyone's here except Mr. Finnegan wasn't able to join us tonight, but he said he'd be at the deliberative. Next slide, please. Then we have the School Board, who's also joining us for the public hearing. I'll leave it there for a second. Go ahead. Next slide, Ken. Tonight's agenda: We're going to go over the meeting purpose and the rules. We'll cover the first and second sessions of annual meeting, and then all of the different articles that'll be on the ballot for the district in March will be covered. I'm going to cover- so normally, I would dole out- I know Michael was the chair last year, and he doled out a few slides per person on the Budget Committee, but being this is all on Zoom, and it would be a little bit on the jumpy side, trying to jump around. I've already talked to the folks on the Budget Committee, and we're going to just have me go over the eight or nine slides. And then after that, we'll hand it over to Dr. Farah to cover the default budget. Then I'll do the couple of slides for the revenue budget, and then hand it off to the School Board to go through all the different warrant articles that are going to be on there. Next slide, please, Ken. So the purpose of the public hearing is to present the preliminary proposed 21-22 TRSD budget appropriations to the public to allow for public testimony and questions on the budget prior to finalization by the Budget Committee. So after each of the articles, or after Article 2 and then the following articles, we'll open those up for public comment. Just a note on that, and for anyone watching, as an attendee, at the bottom of your Zoom, there is a participant button with a picture of a couple of people with a number next to it. Well, for me, it's got a number next to it. You probably don't see that. But anyway, as an attendee, you should see some little dots to the right of your name, where you can click that and raise your hand. And then we have some folks moderating this that will- I don't know if it's Dean or you, Ken, but they will allow you to comment. And with that, we would just ask you to name your name, your town, and your address for the public record. And for anyone who can't call in or isn't doing the audio via phone through Zoom, we do have the number. I believe it's the number I stated earlier, where someone can call, and then that'll be forwarded to Mr. Sherwood, and he will hold the phone up so that we can make sure we cover anyone who wants to address us. So-
Sorry, Todd. Just for clarity, do you want to recognize the people raising their hands in Zoom? And then Dean will unmute them?
Yeah, I could do it that way, sure.
All right, great.
After the public hearing, immediately following the public hearing, the Budget Committee will finalize the budget for presentation at the deliberative session. During this public hearing, only Budget Committee members may make motions to change the budget at the public hearing. All right, next slide, please, Ken. Meeting ground rules: The online link to this public hearing is www.timberland.net/zoompublichearing. If you wish to speak, please raise your virtual hand in Zoom. Here's the phone number if anyone wanted to dial in, (603) 257-5779. Your question will be sent to the Chair. And actually, the way we're doing that is Phil will actually let someone know that he's got to call and that somebody wants to speak. You will be recognized before speaking. Please state your name, your address for the record. Please be respectful. Profanity, personal attacks, rude or slanderous remarks will not be tolerated. And I mean, offenders will be asked to leave the meeting. That's kind of a carryover from last year. But, you know, I think we're all adults. We're just asked that everyone be adults and be respectful. And all right, next slide, Ken. Comments should be limited to the topic at hand. Speakers will be allotted up to five minutes to make their statement. Allow those who have not spoken an opportunity to do so before offering additional comment. If you're requesting to speak for the second time, it must be to discuss something new and not a repetition of previous comments. The Chair reserves the right to discontinue comment on a topic in order to move the meeting along. Next slide. First session of the annual meeting, deliberative. You are hereby notified to meet at Timberland High School, 36 Green Isle Road, Plastow, New Hampshire on Thursday, the fourth day of February 2021, at 7:00 p.m. This session shall consist of explanation, discussion, and debate of warrant articles numbers two through number 10. Warrant articles may be amended subject to the following limitations: A) Warrant articles whose wording is prescribed by law shall not be amended; B) Warrant articles that are amended shall be placed on the official ballot for a final vote on the main motion as amended; and C) No warrant articles shall be amended to eliminate the subject matter of the article. Next slide. Second session of the annual meeting, voting. Voting on warrant articles numbers one through number 10 will be conducted by official ballot to be held in conjunction with town meeting voting to be held on Tuesday, the ninth day of March 2021, at the town election polls in Atkinson, Danville, Plastow, and Sandown, New Hampshire. Atkinson voting will be conducted at the Atkinson Community Center from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Danville voting will be conducted at the Danville Community Center from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Plastow voting will be conducted at the Plastow Public Works Garage from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And Sandown voting will be conducted at the Sandown Town Hall from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Article 1, Election of Officers. To choose the following school district officers. So we have three School Board seats up in March, one in Atkinson, one in Plastow, and one in Sandown, all three-year terms. For the Budget Committee, we have a three-year term in Atkinson, a one and a three-year term in Plastow, and a one and a three-year term in Sandown. Article 2, The Operating Budget. Shall the voters of the Timberland Regional School District raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling $74,318,918? Should this article be defeated, the operating budget shall be $74,267,397, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Timberland Regional School District or by law. Or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13-X and 16, or 10 and 16, to take up issue, the issue of a revised operating budget only. Note, warrant Article 2, the operating budget does not include appropriations proposed under any other warrant articles. Majority vote required. So the budget process developed- the budget's developed in accordance with applicable New Hampshire statutes, RSA's 32, 33, and 195. Incorporation of the Budget Committee's mission statement: The Budget Committee will develop a fiscally sound annual budget that will optimally meet the needs of the district by working with district personnel and in consultation with the School Board. Throughout the budget process, the Budget Committee will take into consideration district taxpayers as well as support for staff, rigor evaluation, and accountability initiatives that drive student achievement. We'll also review- do a review of actual expenditures and prior years, consideration for staffing and enrollment projections, deliberation of capital improvements requested within the Capital Improvement Plan, otherwise known as CIP, collaboration with administrators, department heads, teachers, and others. So just an overview of the proposed operating budget that's in Article 2. The voted budget in March of 2020 for this current school year, the 2020-2021 school calendar is with $73,304,644. That excludes capital reserve contributions that were voted. The new proposed operating budget for next year, 21-22, is $74,318,918. With the net change, it's up about $1,014,274, or 1.38% increase. Next slide. So here are some of the major budget increases, anything really over $25,000. As you can see, we had quite a few increases come in. None of these were really anything that we could prevent, the benefits. We'll go into some more detail after this, but those went up $1.8 million. Salaries, $607,000. Special education, $350,000. Curriculum initiatives, $207,000, and student transportation, $62,000. Some of the major budget decreases. We were able to eliminate $684,000 open and vacant positions, $450,000 through attrition, existing positions, $300,000. SAU withdrawal, $255,000, $110,000 from projected utilities, and $100,000 in contracted services. So that all kind of boils down into more of an object code look at things, salaries and benefits budget by object code. You can see that we've got some pretty large variances here. The total salaries, that's directly tied to teacher contracts. So those are contracted increases. The group insurance, you know, unfortunately, is taking an upturn here. Non-teacher retirement, teacher retirement, those are state-mandated. Pushed down, nothing we could really do about that. And then you've got tuition, workers' comp, FICA also on the increase there, too. So we had- we were looking at a two-point, almost a $2.5 million increase going into the budget season. Next slide, please. Expenses budget by object code here. Here, we were able to find some reductions here. Office admin- well, the office admin services, that's actually the SAU, correct, Jeff?
I just caught you.
Yeah, yeah. So what happened there is those are actually moved into other parts of our Timberland School District budget now. That used to be its own line item. And then professional services, down $270,000. Cleaning services, down $23,000. And then a few other increases there, repair and maintenance, student transportation, other purchased property, insurance, telephone communication, postage, printing and advertising went down a little bit, and tuition is up almost $347,156. Expense budget by object code continued. Travel and workshops went up a little bit, $17,015. Supplies, up $5,689. Utilities, energy, down $109,000. Books, info, resource, and software, up $207,764. Equipment is up $24,836. Dues and fees, up $11,035. And then miscellaneous expenses, down $2,501. So that comes up with a grand total of a $1,014,274 increase over the last voted budget in March. So with that, we're going to open this up to public comment. Bear with me. This is- we've had one Budget Committee meeting where I think one person spoke, so using this format. So I'm going to open up my participants here. And we would welcome the public to comment at this point. First one that pops up on my screen is Mrs. Hampy. Ken?
She is on.
Okay. Mrs. Hampy, if you could just state your name and your address, we'd appreciate it. See, their microphone is not muted.
This better?
Yep, we can hear you.
There we go. My apologies. All right. Good evening. Coral Hampy, 38 Boulder Drive in Danville, TTA President. I would like to thank the Budget Committee for using a balanced approach in creating a proposed budget at the last meeting. You all worked diligently to find areas where cuts could be made while compromising with the School Board's suggested budget. As you all work to finalize the budget tonight, please remember that teachers and staff are the heart and soul of the district. We are working so hard to educate the future leaders of our country, and it would be a tragedy to take away educators who are working to keep our district so forward-thinking. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Hampy. Okay, we're still open for public comment if anyone else would like to speak.
I believe the School Board Chairman have a question, Dr. Farah.
Okay.
I have a question in regards to the Budget Committee's proposed budget. As you're aware, the School Board has, based on the superintendent's recommendation, removed approximately $2 million in staff positions and benefits for the upcoming year. Why is the Budget Committee funding positions that the School Board will not have next year?
Okay, I'll take that, Dr. Farah. In watching the School Board meeting, it sounded, or it looked like, the request to Dr. Cochrane, I believe, two weeks prior to that vote that the School Board took, was to try to find $1.5 to $2 million to reduce from the budget, from the salary lines and from programs. I can tell you that I personally talked to Dr. Cochrane that morning before our Budget Committee meeting, and I asked him straightforwardly if we were able to find that money from somewhere else in the budget and still meet the initiative of cutting the proposed budget by $2 million. Would that work for you? And his response to me was that would be fine with me. So I think us as a committee, we were trying to find a way to meet the budgetary request of reducing the budget by that amount without having to go after staff and programs.
But the business administrator and his comments to you have stated that your approach to reducing the budget is not typically done. I can pull up his comments right here because it was in your Budget Committee information. The business administrator noted that budgeting for general vacancy is not best practice.
You're talking about the attrition?
Correct. So you're not following the recommendation? The Budget Committee chose not to follow the recommendations of the business administrator.
Okay. Jeff, do you see a problem with the attrition? I mean, I thought we had gone over that. It sounded like- it sounded like that was kind of in the low-hanging fruit category, which is really what we were attempting to do, was to attack the budget from all angles and every line to try to find where we had some room, you know, between this year and next.
So the reality of it is that we do end up with positions that we do have open for a period of time just due to, you know, people having to leave in the rehire cycle. So we do end up having invariably some element of that every year. Best practice on my end is to have all positions budgeted for the, you know, for the amount that they're budgeted for. So I have all salary lines budgeted for the amount that we have in place for that. So we're creating essentially an allowance. And we had a discussion at the Budget Committee, I believe, that night about the nature of that allowance for that, and I won't say attrition, but for those positions that are vacant before they're filled. It happens every year. It's happened every year. I believe Dr. Cochrane had an example of a situation that it had been budgeted in another district at a very large amount, and for whatever reason, there hadn't been retirements that year or something that they hadn't initially met it. If I have positions, I like to budget for those positions. It is an allowance. It is something that we have had happen every year. It is- it is the reality of it, that they are there every year. But I do like to budget positions, you know, entirely. So just for everyone on the call, what Dr. Farah is referring to is a cut that was made to the budget on a number of positions. It's essentially an allowance, recognizing the fact that, for example, we may have some paraprofessional positions. Someone may leave, and we have some period of time before someone is rehired. So the Budget Committee did adopt an allowance for those positions in the budget, not for those positions, but for the time that those positions are open where we're not paying someone. And again, it's the reality that it does happen. I'd like to budget more in the affirmative on the positions that we have, that they're, you know, that they're fully funded. All positions are fully funded. We do just have that allowance that's out there. So we had a discussion about that that night at the Budget Committee, I believe. Again, it's happened every year invariably. It happens every year. We have openings. We end up with surplus because of those openings, because of the time that it takes for a position, when it's vacated, to be filled. We end up with cost savings.
So why is this the first year that you proposed to alter the budget downward based on that?
I believe that the- that there had been a call to look at areas where we continually have surplus, to really start chipping away at our surplus, to look at those areas that are contributing most to surplus to try and bring our budgeting more in line with our actual expenditures. And every year, we've gotten a little bit closer to that, and this is just one component of that.
Todd, can I make a statement?
Sure.
The other piece of that that concerned me when I listened to that meeting was the comments that the business administrator made about the retirement benefits and when we have people retire, where that money gets pulled from. And I thought I heard that it often gets pulled from those assumptions that are made through those positions. So if we eliminate all of that, and then we have people retire, which we know we will, then where do those retirement benefits come from?
So Jen, what you're referring to is that when if someone- if someone retires, and there is a retirement incentive that is paid out-
Yeah.
Yeah, that is paid out to them at that time. That would typically come out of their salary line. We do not budget a separate amount for any liabilities associated with that. We do receive, we do experience some cost savings, and that's more true attrition there. So when we have a higher-paid, more senior staff leave, we do end up with some room in their budget line with the staff who is replacing them. So we do have some room there almost automatically to be able to pay out those retirement incentives. This doesn't really touch those retirement incentives. This actually doesn't even look really at the retirement necessarily. This simply looks at the fact that we have, you know, let's say, a paraprofessional position or administrator or someone that, just for whatever reason, they've started or they can't be hired in time for a full year. We're budgeting something less than a full year for them.
Right. At that meeting, I thought you said that you use some of that to pay out some of the retirement incentives.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a cushion to make sure that we have enough to cover those retirement incentives.
That's my point, yeah.
Ms. Lowes?
So we go right back to where we were at the SAU, Jeff, where we have unfunded benefits, basically. So we're not funding the retirement incentive. There's no funding. There's no line. There's no- What you're doing is you're buffering salaries and benefits to try to cover that. That's an issue to me.
We actually did have, believe it or not, we actually did have a small amount, about a third of our total liability at the SAU level. in the budget for that, to make sure that we had enough cash and had built up enough of a fund balance. But our pool at SAU was so small compared to how large the Timberlane workforce is, that we needed it there.
Right.
Your concept is the same, though.
That was caught in the audit. So now I'm concerned with the state of Timberlane, with the way we're funding this. Because some of these positions that we eliminated have been open for two years or so. So I think that, you know, maybe next year, the Budget Committee ought to look at possibly putting up a warrant article to fund these unfunded liabilities that Timberlane has. Because where do you get that?
Sheila, I would like that. I think that would allow a lot better budgeting to actual, to have a bit of a reserve to dip into so that it doesn't have an impact on the budget. You can run the budget a lot tighter that way, right? It's a good idea.
Because this makes up a huge amount of the surplus, does it not, Jeff?
The surplus is, obviously, we have surplus from open positions. Those positions are being eliminated. We have some surplus if staff leaves and a lower-age staff comes in. And we do have some surplus invariably just from positions being open. You have three or four positions over the course of a year that are open for three or four months each from the time of departure until the time of rehire. That's a full position.
And some of those monies, Todd, when that teacher retires, some of those monies that you're gaining from possibly hiring a teacher at a lower salary is now going out in a retirement incentive depending on the years. So we could run into a problem one year. We could run into a big problem one year. I just, you know.
The good thing, Sheila, is that, so the good thing, oftentimes, we have some flexibility on the payment of those retirement obligations so that they can be paid after the beginning of the next year, but you're just kicking the can down the road in fairness. So but you're also in a better position to capture that because by the time those retirements are in, which is, I believe, around January, typically, or the end of December, we would typically know and say, hey, you know what? Got a problem this year. We have a lot of people who are retiring for whatever reason that happens. You know, that's something we'd need to look into at that time if we were running very, very tight, which we should be running, but the budget should be very tight compared to what our anticipated actual expenditures are. We should not be appropriating more than what we think we're going to spend from the taxpayers.
Agreed. We actually have a public comment from someone in the attendees. So I see a hand raised. Ken, if you would, Mrs. Scanlon?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome. If you could just state your full name and your address, Mrs. Scanlon, that'd be great.
Sarah Scanlon, and 19 Wine Set Drive in Danville. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but I obviously am paying attention. My concern with the two different budgets, the School Board's version and the Budget Committee's version is to do with the FLESS program, the foreign language in elementary schools. So I'm going to read what I read to the Budget Committee a couple of weeks ago. So I'm sorry if I'm repeating it, but I also wanted to ask a few questions because I know that that's somewhere that, when you were talking about having cuts, you know, made to programs and staffing, that that's where one of the lines that the School Board found some savings. And I just, I don't think it's a saving. I think it's not necessary to cut from that area. So I'm going to read out my statement and then ask a few questions. I don't know if that's possible, but so my name's Sarah Scanlon. I'm from Danville, and I'm going to speak tonight to my experience with the FLESS program. I have a daughter in the sixth grade and a son in ninth grade. My daughter was fortunate enough to be the first year of the FLESS program at Danville Elementary, and she started learning Spanish in kindergarten. Now she's in sixth grade. Throughout her time at Danville, she had Spanish lessons and absorbed this new language like a sponge. Learning Spanish had to come as routine as gym or a math lesson. Now that she is in sixth grade, her reading, writing, and speaking skills are being reviewed and built upon. They are not starting from scratch. They have a wide base knowledge of the culture and understanding of the language. My son did not get that opportunity, and he started learning his second language when he joined middle school. He chose French as his initial language and then is now trying Spanish in high school. It always impresses me that he can ask our 11-year-old about a phrase or spelling or how to write a response, and just as quickly as she would answer for an English class, she can guide him in Spanish. She even includes how he should be pronouncing his words. My main concern is, you know, elementary kids soak up this information and learn a language, you know, prior to puberty, that's the time when they can absorb and learn this language, and it helps with utilizing problem-solving skills. They are able to read and write and comprehend the language. Many studies back up the data, and I wish my son had been able to have that opportunity and be so natural and fluent in Spanish. We're very connected in our world, and, you know, in America, Spanish is the second most widely spoken language. And, you know, we're the second-largest Spanish-speaking country after Mexico. So I understand that the Budget Committee has been able to find cuts and been able to find savings, shall we say, without cutting this program. And I just, I feel like, you know, when you look objectively at whether you should keep something in a budget, shouldn't it be based on low enrollment or the program is not performing? You know, we've really just only got to the point where we can understand if it's performing. And, you know, due to COVID, they weren't able to do any more data tests, you know, last year on how that sixth-grade class is now performing and the fourth grade currently. So, you know, normally, you would base it off of data and look at the curriculum. And I would love to know if the curriculum and all the data was requested and looked at before suggesting it as a saving. And, you know, I know there's a lot of positive support for the program, and it definitely has a positive impact and gives our children an edge. I just don't know, I don't see it as having to be a cut. And I just wanted to give my two cents worth and understand that it's very valuable and that a lot of people appreciate this program and appreciate the experience it's giving to our children. And, you know, it's not just my friends in Danville. It's, you know, parents throughout the elementary schools. So thank you for your time, and if you have a chance to answer if you have reviewed the data or have surveyed the parents about the program prior to making the suggestion, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Scanlon. I'm not really in a position to answer that if anyone wants to, or that'd be fine.
I can, Todd, if you don't mind, and Sarah. So the Curriculum and Assessment Committee did create a presentation about a year and a half ago and presented that to the School Board that went into detail about the FLESS program and how it was built, the goals, the levels of achievement anticipated by middle school, and, you know, a number of different factors. But the School Board has not received, well, I should say, the Curriculum and Assessment Committee has not received a request from the School Board to present updated data before making this suggested cut or accepting this suggested cut that was presented by the superintendent. So in short, recently, unfortunately, no. I would have been very interested to see any information that Madame Laire, Sandy Laire, had presented to the School Board. So I wish she would have been given the opportunity to do that before this decision was made.
Okay. Mr. Boyle?
I guess I'm going to hate to do this to you, Dr. Cochran. I want to, I guess I'm going to ask the superintendent way in on this a little bit. But before you do, Dr. Cochran, obviously, serving on the Budget Committee and the School Board, so I was in both those meetings when we were talking about potential reductions, as well as two weeks later in the Budget Committee meeting. I want everyone home to recognize who did not watch those meetings, that the School Board voted and directed the superintendent to come up with some savings. The superintendent and his team came up with $2.3 million in savings. When the School Board just made, after Dr. Cochran gave his presentation, we made a motion to reduce the budget by $2.3 million. Dr. Cochran immediately said, well, I didn't think you were going to do that, so can you work with me here and give me back, I believe, about $300,000? That's what the School Board immediately did. So we were working with the, still, I believe, working with superintendent and his senior staff, and that's how they came up with the recommendations. And as Dr. Farah had mentioned, it's because I've served in different capacities here. I was, I like where the Budget Committee is doing everything they can, but I've never seen, I've never seen it happen where the Budget Committee would, I guess, try to, I guess, overrule governing body. And, you know, so basically, so like theoretically, the Budget Committee could sit back and say, I would like to see more programs added. I want to increase the budget. And if the School Board doesn't go along with that, it doesn't seem to make sense to me. So that's the issue that I see right now. So obviously, here we are at a public hearing, and I understand that all that can happen is you, this is part of the process here as we go into the elections. And I would like to hear from the superintendent what his thoughts are on this matter.
I could do that. I'm just looking for a file that I created a while ago, which was essentially, I think that may be it there. Yeah. If I go back to my original conversations, first with respect to Mr. McCromick's comment that I had said that it would be fine with me, that's essentially a typical superintendent stance in that, you know, we'll work with whatever sum that we get. If we end up with more budget than less, then, you know, that's fine. But I was not recommending the change, just simply now letting you know that if there is more money there, there are times that things happen, but I was not advocating in that sense. However, one of the things that I am concerned about is when I'm looking at data and the district performance over time. From a statistical perspective, one of the best predictors of aggregate student performance over time is the percentage of free and reduced lunch students within the district. And Timberlane is about 13.5% free and reduced lunch eligible, which is about half of the state average, or perhaps a little less than the state average. But when you look at data from the Department of Education website from 2016 to 19, we see that, and I believe that's grades three through eight. I'm not sure if it includes 11 or not, but basically, we've gone from being slightly above the state average to down to about state average. And that's looking at both percentage of students proficient in English language arts have decreased. The growth percentile, how much a student grew in comparison to their peers, is down. And those same two metrics in math are down. The percentage of students proficient in 2016, we were above a bit, but the state average in 2019, we're actually below the state average. And the student percentile, we went from state average to below state average. So my comment in the, when I was discussing this in prior meetings, was to say that core instruction is the single most important thing that we have to look at. So core instruction is regular instruction in classes. Typically, social studies, science, math, English language arts, for example. And in our case, we are, I would say, underperforming, given our community population. And that's a concern that I believe that we have to address. I believe that there is a value in foreign language. My children themselves were in French immersion as a program. And, but my primary concern as expressed in that meeting was essentially core instruction. And then tier-two instruction, tier-two instruction is the additional supports that are put in place when students are not getting what I'm going to refer to as a year's growth for years instruction. And so when that happens, we need to provide supports, first because you want those students to maintain the trajectory that they should moving from grade level to grade level. And if they don't, then you sometimes have students, I would say, fall into special education in that they're not getting growth. They're not showing the characteristics that they should. And therefore, we go to tier-three instruction and we create an IEP and based on the verifiable data. And that is an extra level of support to try and improve their academic standing and their academic growth. So what I was trying to argue was that, to me, given where, given our results and our trajectory, both over the last three to four years, my concern is being able to adequately fund those three aspects, if that makes sense.
Makes sense to me.
We have another, Mrs. Scanlon, again, I'm not seeing anybody else raise their hand. So the rules are, if it's the same topic.
Or a different topic.
Or a different topic. So I'm going to allow you to be in here, Mrs. Scanlon, but we want to try to, we want to try to keep off of doing the same topic over and over again. So Ken, go ahead, and, but we don't want to drag this out too much, Mrs. Scanlon.
Okay. I just, I understand what Dr. Cochran is saying about, you know, focusing on the core subjects and statistics and data, and I understand that. I just feel that before a program is considered to be removed or cut, that really, you know, consultation with maybe surveying the parents or checking the data, you know, whether it be from the fourth graders who were tested to now, you know, the sixth grade that they're in now. I just feel that in foreign language, it also is improving their listening skills, you know, their critical thinking skills. It doesn't just equate to, you know, the fact that they're just learning Spanish. It's helping them in all aspects and gives a well-rounded education. So I would hope that it would be considered again by the School Board that that's not an area to make a cost-saving. And thank you for your time. I appreciate you letting me speak again.
Thank you, Mrs. Scanlon. Mr. Sherwood's had his hand up for a little bit there, so Phil?
I appreciate it, and thank you, Dr. Cochran, for that honest assessment. Certainly, we want to hear that we're trending up, right? That's sort of what we want to hear, and we appreciate your candor and your honesty. It might be a little challenging for you to give a precise answer to this because you're, you know, forgive the expression, still the new kid in the block in some regards. But do you believe the district has underfunded core, some of these core programs where we're underperforming over the last few budget years? Not talking about this budget years, but looking back, performance is down. In your assessment, have we underfunded it?
I'm sorry, I'm just making notes, Mr. Sherwood. I'll be right back to you. I'm sorry, I'm just making notes, Mr. Sherwood, I'll be right back to you. I really don't think I have as detailed an answer for you on that. In terms of class sizes, where our class sizes are quite favorable. But I'm not sure where we are with our with our tier two supports. And I believe that that our special education services, we have some significant work to do. We have people who are working very, very hard and and doing very good work, but we're not headed in a good direction in that area as well, based on on what I've seen since July. Although I think we are making some improvements. We have increased a number of special education administrators that have helped with with flow and processes. But I would not be able to to answer in terms of core programs. I don't see evidence of underfunding. At the same point in time, there are other programs like tier two and tier three in that address all subject areas appear to need some significant addressing, just based on the data and and what I've seen. Not do, I can certainly attest not due to the hard work on behalf of of teachers, parents and administration.
That that makes a lot of sense. So I'm not surprised by that answer that that we can't necessarily point to underfunding of course, subjects as being the reason for performance trending in a direction other than we'd like to see it. However, there are other programs that tie into the success of that program. There are many variables that can play into whether we're going in the right direction. So I'm interested, then, your comments about where the true priorities, if you have limited resources, which of course we do, where where they lie and and sort of, you didn't draw a conclusion for us about second language and that having that as an opportunity for children in the district and core instruction underperforming. So can you clarify, were you drawing a correlation for us? Or were you drawing a causation for us? Because I think that's really important. If 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 the superintendent is suggesting that the presence of this program is the causation for core instruction programs not performing or a potential variable thereof, I'd be interested in hearing it. I think the public would be too. But my sense is you may have just been coming from the perspective of you were told to cut, you were told to cut from a small, specific set of area and 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 you're trying to preserve the programs that we have. So I just, I guess, the three years digest version is a causation or correlation in terms of programs going down in second language.
I would, I would not argue that we have evidence of causation that adding flesh caused a cause a decrease in student learning over time. But the cost of flesh is probably eating into the the resources that we would be providing in tier two and tier three services. Does that make sense? I mean, I, I, I mean, based on my conversations with people within district, the, you know, the the majority opinion is is that the the program is working as it should. But if we have to, if if I'm charged with finding money, if I'd have to choose between something that is a good program but ancillary as opposed to doing a better job with tier one, two and three instruction, I would err on the side of tier one, two and three instruction. Based on my my experience.
Thank you for the explanation, Dr. Cochran.
Ms. Loes.
I've heard this question asked over and over and over again. I still haven't gotten a good answer to this. Where and how was flesh fit in to the weekly schedule of learning when we did not extend the school day? Something has been cut back, cut short, something in order to fit flesh into a school day. And I've never gotten a good answer on where this time got taken from. But it had to come from somewhere because we did not extend the school day.
I don't have an answer for that.
But that's a concern of mine. When we're seeing these these things coming down or breaking even around the state, but we don't know where this time is coming from.
Dr. Fair.
I have a question for Attorney Shawnee. We now have a proposed budget that is moving forward positions or funding positions that the governing body has eliminated. Is that legally sound? And could somebody bring suit against the district for the Budget Committee really essentially not budgeting properly based on what the governing body determines that its needs are in terms of staffing?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, the 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 budget you get from from the voters will not dictate whether you keep or eliminate positions. And I think that's perhaps an important thing to clarify for the voters and for everybody here for the Budget Committee and the Board. If the Board has determined that it's going to eliminate positions and the and the voters or the Budget Committee provides more funding than the Board's asked for, then that does not change the school board's ability to eliminate those positions. And that's a kind of a different, a difficult concept to 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 understand sometimes, but it's still the governing body's purview to determine what programs and positions it will keep or cut. The the other question is, could somebody bring suit? Well, you know, we all know that somebody could bring suit for really anything. So the better question is, is there a good suit out there? I wouldn't want to answer that question publicly because I represent the district and both the Budget Committee and the Board are are components of the district. And I wouldn't want to invite a lawsuit against the district. What I will say is that not typical to see a Budget Committee provide more funding in the operating budget than the school board has said it needs to operate a school district.
So point of fact, Attorney Shawnee, there was a number recommended, and that's the number that we reduced. So, right?
No, that's that's not correct, Mr. McCormick.
Well, 2 million, and that's what we reduced, Dr. Fair.
We requested 2 million to be removed in staffing. That is not what you removed.
You recommended 2 million, and that is what we reduced the budget by. It's a bottom line budget, correct?
You are funding positions that are not approved, will not be in next year's budget. This is what Attorney Shawnee is trying to tell you. Even though the number is the same, you are funding positions that the governing body has removed. And if I go to the deliberative session, I would think that a voter is going to say, wow, the governing body just eliminated 2 million dollars in positions and benefits, and the Budget Committee has now eliminated another million dollars in something, you know. I think it would be, make sense to remove that million dollars from the proposed budget because you're funding positions in your proposed budget that aren't there.
So can you explain to me how this year is different than last year when your representative came to our Budget Committee meetings and recommended that we cut staffing? And we found other ways to do it. And then the year prior to that, he came there again as a representative of the budget of the school board and recommended that we cut staffing lines, and we found other ways to do it. How is this different?
The Budget Committee does not cut staffing. That's not the role.
Yes, you did. Mr. Boyle, you absolutely did that last year.
Okay, did I, did I vote for your that this two weeks ago? Did I vote for that?
No, you didn't.
That's what I thought.
I really can't speak to what happened. I don't, unfortunately, don't have the time to watch every Budget Committee meeting. But you are funding positions that the governing body has eliminated. So hypothetically, hypothetically, okay, it is a bottom line budget. So let's say this budget passes and you've hypothetically, you, the budget passes and you have about 1.5 million dollars in positions that the school board has eliminated. What you're doing is you're raising and appropriating funds from the taxpayers that should not be raised and appropriated, that we'll have to go back to them.
We didn't eliminate no positions, Dr. Farah. I think you know that, right? Open, open and vacant positions plus another $300,000 in positions were eliminated, correct?
Against the business administrator's recommendation as to how to budget for attrition, so to speak. So yes, you did do it against the business administrator's recommendations.
Yeah, and last year he recommended that we didn't cut, you know, some parts of the 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 benefits as much as we did and also the utilities. It's our job to try to forecast what we think is going to be spent, right?
It's a bottom line budget. I'm just letting you know that the Board has eliminated 2 million dollars in staffing and positions. Unless that Board vote changes at some point, that is what is going to be put forth in the budget. That's all.
Okay.
Fair enough.
I just don't understand how you're funding positions that the governing body has eliminated. Can you add positions? Attorney Shawnee, can can the Budget Committee add positions to the proposed budget?
The question's not even germane. We're not even trying to do that.
Well, yes, you are, because the school board doesn't have those positions next year. So in essence, you're adding positions that are not in next year's administration.
Yeah, defending them.
How are they funding positions that are no longer there next year, Attorney Shawnee?
That's a rhetorical question. Um, so I don't really think I can answer a rhetorical question. I assume that, based on the slide, the budget process works like this. The Budget Committee asks the school board and superintendent for recommendations. Yeah, recommend, well, what are your staffing? Yeah, what are your staffing projections for next year? And based on, you know, that and other factors, the Budget Committee funds particular lines in the proposed operating budget. I mean, that's, that's kind of an oversimplification of how the process works, but that's the rest is really a rhetorical question.
Attorney Shawnee, we motioned. There was a motion. It wasn't a recommendation. The Board motioned to remove those positions. It was a motion. It's done. That's, I think, it's a deciding factor here, is that there's already been a motion. Those those positions are eliminated as far as this Board is concerned. The motion is in. It's done. It passed. So these positions are, in fact, exactly what Dr. Farah is saying. There are eliminated positions that are still being funded. That's the difference. It's already been motioned. It's already been carried. It's already been passed by this Board.
I mean, I think that, was it illegal? I don't, I don't think it was illegal. But I think the question I'm being asked is, is it, is it the standard process? I think if the Board eliminated 200 positions and told the Budget Committee it needed, it needed funding for only 100 because it eliminated 200 other positions, the Budget Committee's job is to literally say, all right, you need funding for 100 positions because you eliminated 200 positions and either provide that amount of funding or if it can't afford to provide that level, provide less funding, perhaps by cutting other lines. It's just not typical for a Budget Committee to provide more funding than the school board is indicating it needs for the staffing positions the following year. And that's, but nothing's ever typical in Timberland.
Exactly.
It's, if I may, Todd, we, the, the Board asked the superintendent to do quite a difficult job to come up with 1.4 to 2 million dollars of cuts, but he was told he could only do it in specific areas, asked for his recommendations in those specific areas. He did that, and he went above and beyond. He, he came up with additional. We, we, we took the superintendent's number, the number of cuts that he produced and the Board asked for, and and we delivered on that. So it's interesting, it is a bottom line budget. We do have to talk about these specific areas because we can't contextualize a bottom line budget without talking about the needs and the different line items. But in the end, we're providing the, in the end, we're providing the cuts in excess of what the Board originally asked for. The sticking point here is there seems to be vocal members in the Board that they can do, they can do what they want in terms of moving the money around, and we just set the budget. The sticking point is that they want the cuts consolidated with human bodies. And I, not all the cuts that the Budget Committee made am I excited about. And and Dr. Farah and the school board has made some excellent points. But in the end, you know, we're talking about, it's a 1.38% increase of which the vast majority of that increase is mandated by the state for us to pay in pensions. So like, I just, I don't understand why people are so interested in eliminating the FLESS program. That's what this comes down to. This, this isn't about a bottom line budget. It feels like this, this debate is about eliminating the program. And I'm not an expert on the program, but I feel like the budget that the Budget Committee voted for overwhelmingly meets the needs of the district. I trust the superintendent to navigate the channels of that. I just don't, I'm not eager to eliminate a program.
Mrs. Loes.
What this does come down to is that the governing Board eliminated positions.
Can you read the motion to me, Ms. Loes?
Off the top of my head, no, because I'm in a public hearing and I'm sitting here on this, and I don't have the minutes on me.
The wording you're using doesn't, that doesn't ring a bell with me. It doesn't sound like that was the motion.
The motion was to eliminate 2 million dollars off the list, off the list that Dr. Cochran provided the Board. Okay, some of those were unfilled, some were filled. But what this also comes down to, Phil, is that we are not only funding the positions, but this also goes into teacher retirement, FICA, group insurance. It's not just one line it's affecting. It affects more than one line is what it come, what it basically comes down to. But my question is, when somebody comes up to the deliberative and they say you are funding positions that are no longer in the budget, you're going to be able to defend it. You are funding positions that are no longer in that budget.
I don't have a PhD in a public administration, but I always thought the budget process started with the Budget Committee. So this notion that the school board can unilateral.
You don't have the right to add or eliminate positions.
You're, you're right, we don't. And we're not asserting that. We're providing, but yeah, you're absolutely right. I agree with you. But I, we're an independent body. And so I think we try to read the tea leaves. We don't want to put something before the voters that is tone deaf. We don't want to, we want to work with the school board and compromise. We did that. Many of us cut way more than we were comfortable cutting. And I'm increasingly convinced, we're not talking about numbers. We're talking about why we're funding a program that's popular that some school board members don't want to fund any longer.
I disagree.
That's the debate.
Raising and appropriating monies that aren't going to be used and my taxpayers are going to have to come up with that is going to basically sit in a budget and end up being surplus for a year. That's, that's basically what I'm talking about. And I've got a lot of sand down people that are hurting right now.
If it was a 3%, 4% increase, I would echo your comments. We're talking at a 1%, we're talking at a 1.38% increase of which the vast majority is trickle down mandates from the state. It's not an increase for us. It's the states forcing us to pay their obligations and the pensions. So we're not sitting on more money, yet we're still cutting. We're essentially flat funding the budget. If you look, if if you take into consideration the mandates from the state. Um, if you look, i- if, if, if you take into consideration the mandates from the state. Which I know none, none of us can do anything about, but trying to potential, contextualize for the taxpayers. It's not a true one point three eight percent increase. The money's already spoken for.
Mr. Bilo, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest, I think we've hashed this out to death and should move on.
I agree. This is not a, uh, time for the school board and the budget committee to go back and forth. It's. Really time for the folks, um, so. Looking for any more hands? If anyone else would like to comment, uh, besides Mrs. Scanlon, not, no offense.
Um, Todd, this is Jen. I just had a quick comment and. Just about the process in general, and I know this was a very. Unusual, difficult year under the circumstances, but I know in years past. Um, we did try and get the budget committee and the school board. To meet together to try and work through some of this and I can't help but wonder. If we had the opportunity to have done that this year, if maybe we would have found ourselves in a little bit better situation than we're in right now. And I know I will not be on the board next year, but I just hope everybody, um, that will still be on budget committee and school board might consider.
Thank you, Mrs. Ove. That's a good idea.
Okay. I just first, I'm sorry, for the record, and maybe Attorney O'Shaughnessy can weigh in again. Typically, uh, because Mr. Sherwood, you, you said that the budget committee develops the budget irrespective of the governing body. For my years as a selectman, the, the governing body. Always took the first look at the budget and then proposed a budget to the budget committee. Attorney O'Shaughnessy, is that the typical route? It's. The governing body.
I didn't say irrespective. I said independent thereof.
Independent, um, it's, should it be independent, Attorney O'Shaughnessy, or should the governing body be, uh. Developing a budget to present to the budget committee?
That, the, the way it works is, it's kind of neither. So. It, it's statutorily the school board's duty to decide the program. And the educational policies of the district by law. Um, that includes setting the staffing levels and, um, you know, h- how the school district runs and operates is the governing body. Uh, the, the budget committee's job is to develop a buddy, a budget after conferring with the governing body. So. Um. The governing body, uh, I mean, the, the budget committee does not have discretion to determine programs. Uh. Priorities outside of saying you have this much money to spend. So it's. It's, it's really not a discretionary decision. It's a budgetary decision for the budget committee.
Okay. We have one more hand up, uh, in the audience. Um, Ken, it's, um, Mr. Collins, if you can state your full name and your address.
Uh, Rob Collins, Danville, New Hampshire. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, a couple of things. Uh, I'm on the Danville Town Budget Committee. Um, and I'm just saying this because, uh, Dr. Farah just mentioned it. The, we, we do take recommendations from the Board of Selectmen, but we don't always follow them. Um, and that's happened the, the last two years that I've been on the budget committee. Um. Also, in the years that I was on the school board, we made recommendations to the budget committee. And sometimes they were followed and sometimes they weren't. Also, uh, in December. The school board did not cut any programs or teachers, but they did cut a dollar amount. In their recommendation to the budget committee. They did not specify what was in that dollar amount. They left it up to the discretion of the superintendent. And they had a long conversation about that. Um, about, uh, allowing him some leeway to make those decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Hold on. Okay, um. Oh, your hand's still up, Mr. Collins. There we go. Okay, um. Mrs. Bill is trying to talk. Jen, you're, you're, your audio is coming through very, very slow. Um. Can you guys hear me?
You're crystal clear. Jen sounded like she was cha-challenged oddly.
Okay. Well, I don't. Okay, uh, I'm gonna get this moving along, folks. Uh, we, I'm gonna ask Ken to bring up the, uh, PowerPoint again, please. And we will move on to the next section, which is going to be you, Dr. Farah. So if you would like to take it from here.
I think I'm still hearing Jen.
Sorry, yeah, just a point of. Never mind.
Okay.
Okay.
Never mind.
Okay, so this is the default budget overview. The twenty-one, twenty-two default budget stands at seventy-four, two, six, seven, three, nine, seven. With an increase of one point three one percent. If you could go to the next slide, please. The default budget is, uh, prepared under RSA forty thirteen, nine, section B. This is the same appropriations as contained in the operating budget authorized for the previous year, reduced and increased as the case may be by debt service contracts or other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law. And reduced by one-time expenditures contained in the operating budget by salaries and benefits of positions that have been eliminated in the proposed budget. For the purposes of this paragraph, one-time expenditure shall be appropriations not likely to recur in the succeeding budget. And eliminated positions shall not include vacant positions under recruitment. Or positions redefined in the proposed operating budget as determined by the governing body. Unless the provisions of RSA forty fourteen B, fourteen B are adopted of the local political subdivision. In calculating the default budget amount, the governing body shall follow the statutory formula, which may result in a higher or lower amount than the proposed operating budget. Please move to the next slide. Um, this is the copy of the draft MSDS, um, that is prepared on behalf of the school board. You can see the appropriations and I did ask, uh, counsel if it was necessary to read these in their entirety and he has stated no. So. As you can see in the instructional subtotal, the prior year budget was thirty-two million, six, fifty-eight, five, one, thirteen. Um, the default budget is thirty-two, three, nine, one, seven, nine, zero. Some of those reductions would be due to, um, changes in proposed staffing. Student Support Services is, um, five million, seven thousand, nine, seventy-six. And the default budget is five million, seventy-four thousand, nine, fifty-six. Please go to the next slide. Uh, General Administration subtotal is the same for both years. Uh, the prior year adopted budget on Executive Administration was thirty-one, five, ninety-two, thirty-four. The default budget is thirty-two, seven, five, two, seven, three, zero. Moving, move on, please. Um, Facilities Acquisition and Construction subtotal, the prior year and the default budget are the same. Fund transfers, the prior year budget and the default budget are the same. That brings the difference between last year's budget from seventy-three, three, oh, four, six, forty-four. Up to seventy-four, two, six, seven, three, nine, seven, due to increases that are listed on the next slide, please. As you can see, most of the increases are due to salary increases. Um, there was some reduction in force on lines eleven hundred and removal of one-time equipment. Lines twelve hundred, the increases are typically due to special education. Um, and program increases lined fourteen hundred, there's equipment decrease due to one-time expenses. Lines two thousand and twenty-two hundred, these are CBA salary increases. There is a net savings from the withdrawal for line twenty-three, twenty of approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars throughout the budget. Um, and that's also part of the reduction in lines twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four hundred and. Twenty-five hundred, as well as twenty-six hundred. Um, there are also. Equipment. Uh, decreases in lines twenty-four hundred. In lines twenty-seven hundred, we have contractual increases as part of the transportation contract, so that line is higher. And, um, obviously in lines twenty-eight hundred through twenty-nine, ninety-nine, there are, um. Uh, benefits that have increased from the prior year budget. Public comment on the default budget. Mr. Collins.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, Rob Collins from Danville, New Hampshire. I noticed in their, um, school board reductions in force as reasons for decreases. Are all of those school board reductions in force? Uh, also, uh. Positions that were removed by the budget committee in the proposed budget?
No, they are not.
Are you going to keep those? Reduction, the school board reduction in force, the funding for those positions in the default budget?
The default budget will be looked at by the school board up till the time of deliberative.
Okay, but what's the rationale for you to keep? A position or funding, or I'm sorry, to remove funding for a position? That the budget committee is funding in their. Budget where they haven't removed that position. The law is very specific to that.
I'm well aware of that, Mr. Collins. Thank you for your comment.
Well, do you have an answer?
I just said that the board is going to revisit the default budget prior to the deliberative session. This is public comment. Your comment is noted.
Okay, thank you very much.
Not fair. Just so we are complying with the law, we do have on the finance supplemental package of more full disclosure by line item, um, detail. For the public if they'd like to view it.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, uh, looks.
Mr. Boyle has a question.
I, I guess, uh, question, more of a comment, so, um. Pretty much what Mr. Collins just pointed out, apparently. See, this is. This is what we were trying to point out earlier. That if, if the budget committee is putting stuff in the budget that doesn't. For programs that don't exist, now. The school board will probably have to increase the default budget so we. We could find ourselves raising all kinds of money that's never gonna get spent, so. That's all. That's my own comment, thanks.
We will have to adjust the default budget based on the proposed budget. That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more hands, Dr. Farah. Oh. Well. You have the floor, Dr. Farah.
Mr. Collins.
One more quick comment. It's a point of clarification that the next board is the board that would make those decisions, uh, for programming and staffing. It wouldn't be this board. Just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Collins, and there are. Three members of this board that will not be returning as far as I know, so. That means six of the current board members will still be seated after the election.
Which by definition is a majority.
Okay, I can't tell if he's got his hand up again or if he's, um.
Oh, I don't know. Sorry, I didn't, I, Mr. Collins, is your hand up again or is that from before?
Nope, it was from before.
Okay. I think I'm all set.
All right. Ken, if you would. Okay, um, this is the, um, projected revenue budget. For, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two. Um. Anyone following along at home, you can also access this, uh, from that packet that I referenced at the beginning. On the Timberlane, uh, website, uh, you can see, uh, what's proposed, uh, revenue coming in in twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. Um, what was, uh, voted, uh, for, for this current year and, uh. And then what was, uh, what was actual in FY twenty-twenty. So we do have, um, some reductions here, um. From one year to the next, the education grant has gone down, uh, quite a bit. Um. I'm gonna ask Jeff to just kinda hit some of the highlights on this, if you wouldn't mind, Jeff. Um, and then we'll open it up for public comment.
Um, I, I think overall, one of the, um, biggest areas here, obviously, is the, is the education grant. Um, delta between, between the current year and as projected. And I will note. For anyone out there who may have a connection with the State House, there were a couple of measures put in place over the past two years in order to, um, assist towns. Uh, with their. Adequacy aid and being able to better meet those towns that not have very, I guess you could say, strong tax base to support their education expenses. And a portion of that we received last year. Um, and I believe Sandown was the, a lot, very large recipient of that. And I believe Dan, Danville as well, we're, we're both very large recipients of that. So that was, that was only a one-year, um, thing. It was part of a two-year plan. There's a one-year, um, option, if you will. So I don't know if that's going to be renewed for next year. I can only go on the numbers that I have right now for the, uh, education grant generally. I'll also note that the numbers seem to be a little bit lower. Um, in some ways overall, based on, um, projected enrollments and based on how the, um, adequacy aid. Education grant are, are divvied up to the towns. I believe that the entire fund appears to be twenty-nine million dollars statewide. Um, lower in funding. So I'm not sure, based on the pandemic year that we're in, how the state would be addressing that. So there, there are really two options there. One is that we did have that, that, uh, portion of. Uh, and I was, I don't want to call it stabilization. We didn't have that portion, um, that the state did provide last year. To those, to those towns who had a tax base that was in, in need of, um, support. Um, and I'm not sure where we're going to end up ultimately with, um, adequacy aid as the state looks at how to deal with the factors that we're running into this year for enrollments and that sort of thing. So if there are any questions, I'm more than happy to address them.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Ken, if you could take us to the next slide, and I believe that is public comment on the revenue budget.
Did Barbara have a question?
I, I did. On, on the revenue slide, we had the PAC made less than twenty, if I understand correctly, the PAC made less than twenty thousand in twenty-twenty. And yet for the twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, we are anticipating triple that, more than triple that. Where did that come from?
So the, um, PAC I project at, um, it, it basically, it should be a general offset. So I'm allowing them up to seventy-seven thousand in, in revenue. Um, that's offset by expenditure. So in the year we just closed, they did have a, uh, all of their, pretty much all of their spring. Bookings were, uh, impacted by the current, uh. COVID environment. And, uh, that was a, a component of. Where their actual, uh, revenue was down. So I, I don't know where it's going to end up for next year, but the, the costs there are quite. Um, variable and it's, you know, basically the more. At a certain point, the more revenue we have in, the more expenses we're going to have. So it's a bit of an offset. So I have to allow the revenue in order to allow the expenses. So I have to allow the revenue in order to allow the expenses on the, on the expenditure side, on the appropriation side. If they don't spend it, if they don't take the money in, in revenue, typically they're not spending, they're not spending it either.
So am I to understand that we aren't charging enough to cover our expenses for the PAC?
No, I don't think that's the issue. I think last year the issue was that we lost a lot of, a lot of bookings in the spring.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Cochran.
Just wanted to confirm that my conversations support Mr. Dowd's explanation. I've had some specific conversations with, with the folks about the, the number of lost contracts and that sort of thing. And that has continued into this year.
Yeah.
So based on, based on my conversations about that specifically, the explanation that I was given is consistent with his explanation.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Cochran. I'm not seeing any hands in the attendees. Okay, it's a lot easier when you're in the pack and they just walk up to the podium. All right, Ken, if you could pull up the next on the presentation, I believe we are handing that over to the school board, Dr. Farah. Or whoever on the school board.
I, I will. So this is the first of three collective bargaining agreements that the board has negotiated and ratified. This one-year collective bargaining agreement pertains to any administrative assistance and maintenance personnel at the school. And this is requesting that the voters raise and appropriate the sum of approximately 20,836 for fiscal year 2122. And these would be attributed to increases in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at the current staffing level. This increase reflects only a 1% COLA. Should this bargaining agreement pass, there will be an increase in this current year budget of one step. And if the major, another major issue or, or agreement between the board and the CBA is that should this pass, that the retirement incentive for employees that have under 20 years of service would not continue. I'll open it up the floor for questions on this bargaining unit. Any questions? Okay, I guess we can move to the next bargaining unit. The next article is the authorization for special meeting on cost items. If the previous article is defeated, this article would request that the, authorize the board to call one special meeting to address the Article III cost items only. Any questions on that? Typically not. I guess go ahead, go ahead forward the slides. Public comment on either Articles Three or Four? I think we can.
I think you'll find that the public comment is bundled behind the CBA. Yeah.
Got it. Let's move on to the second or Article Five. Article Five pertains to the one-year collective bargaining agreement between the district and the Timberland custodian units, union. These are all new bargaining agreements. These employees have not been a part of a bargaining unit before. In this case, this estimated cost of the increase in fiscal year 2122 is $13,998. This would be additional costs attributed to increases in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at the current staffing levels. Again, as with the previous unit, should this article pass, the district will be paying employees a step for 2021. And the retirement incentive for employees with under 20 years of service would not continue. Article Six is authorization for special meeting. If the Article Five is defeated, this authorizes the board to call one special meeting and its option to address Article Five cost items only. Next slide, please. Are there any comments on Articles Five and Six? Not seeing any. I'll move on. Article Seven is a one-year collective bargaining agreement for the Timberland food service workers. This article will approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Food Service Workers Union and the Timberland Regional School Board for FY 2122. That estimated cost is $4,833. The sum represents the additional cost attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at the current staffing levels. If this article passes, there will be a step increase for those employees eligible in year FY 2021. And also, as with the other two bargaining units, there will be the retirement incentive for employees under 20 years of service currently will cease. Next article, Article Eight. Show the voters of the district, if Article Seven is defeated, authorize the Timberland Regional School Board to call one special meeting and its option to address Article Seven cost items only. Are there any comments on these two Articles Seven and Eight? Okay, hearing none. I think I'm all set here. Article Nine is Capital Reserve Fund by Surplus. Show the voters of the Timberland Regional School District raising appropriate up to 250,000 to be placed in the school building, building construction, reconstruction, capital improvement and land purchase. Capital Reserve Fund established in 1996 with such amount to be transferred from those funds in the June 30th, 2021 undersigned fund balance available for transfer on July 1 of this year, which were apportioned as capital expenses in 2021. In accordance with Article Six of the Timberland Regional School District Articles of Agreement, no amount to be raised by additional taxation. Public comment on this. I would like to state for the record that this money is only capital reserve money that would be left at the end of the fiscal year. Should it not be spent? Over the past few years, the board has been diligently working on improving facilities and ensuring that any money that's specifically raised and appropriated for capital expenses is spent to better our facilities. So there is no additional taxation here. And currently, the Capital Reserve Fund that is now held by the Trustee of Trust Funds in Plastow, the value of that is just under a million dollars. That is with the removal of, I think it was 570,000 for the repair of the PAC last summer. Are there any questions or comments on that article? Okay, moving on. Article Ten is General Acceptance of Reports. Show the voters of the Timberland Regional School District accept reports of agents, auditors and committees as written in the 2020 annual report. If not, no comments on that. The budget, turning it back over to the budget committee.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Farah.
You're welcome.
So with that, we're pretty much toward the end here. I just want to announce the special meetings upcoming. The Budget Committee will immediately follow this public hearing. To finalize the proposed budget for deliberative session, that's going to continue on this exact Zoom link that we're on. And then following that, we will be converted into attendees and the school board will be converted back to panelists. And, and then the school board will meet subsequently to review the warrant articles and to conduct board business. Following that, I think there was another slide, Ken. Oh, there we go. I think Jeff was going to talk a little bit about this. The first session, the annual meeting, the deliberative will give some details out for the public Thursday, February 4, 2021 at 7:00 PM in the high school gymnasium. Voter check-in opens at 6:00 PM in the high school cafeteria. So Jeff, I'm going to let you just maybe fill in the public with a little bit of details about the current plan that, that's been worked on between the school board and the, and the moderator.
So a couple of quick notes just to set expectations as to what that deliberative session is going to look like this year. It is scheduled to be held in person. Chairs will be set up in the main gymnasium in a socially distanced manner, six feet apart. The bleachers will be available for those who are from the same household or those who do not need to socially distance so that they may be able to sit together. The chairs on the floor though should remain where they are in order to ensure social distancing. The main gymnasium will be used as it typically is for the deliberative session, with the exception that that room will be limited to voters only. Non-voters will be in a couple of different other areas of the building to ensure proper social distancing. There will be no remote voting, so, or no remote participation. So if, if you're not at the meeting and you're a voter, you would not be able to, to vote or participate or comment on that meeting in any way. So a little bit of a different format as well. Normally, the administration, school board members, well, superintendent, counsel, myself, as well as the budget committee and the school board are all up on the stage at one end of the gym, at the front of the gym. This year, that'll be limited to the school board chair, moderator and district council, as well as the budget committee chair. So it'll only be four people on that main stage this year. So looking forward to being able to pull the event off with all the normal participation in a socially distanced manner. So just setting that out there for the public. Todd, your words appear profound, but you're on mute.
I, I think I read that in one of the emails that went out, I think from Kathy, the first couple of rows in the gym will be set up for any, anyone from school board or budget committee that wants to sit up there, yes?
Correct. Yeah, correct. And the school board and the budget committee typically hold meetings after, immediately after the deliberative session to confirm any recommendations they've made on the budget, but on the warrant articles for the ballot. And I anticipate those meetings would be held remotely, not in the building. Typically, everyone just leaves that room and goes to the library, leaves that room and goes to their next meeting room. Those, those will be held remotely after the meeting. So if there are any school board or budget committee members who are unable to attend in person with the entire meeting in remote mode, those, those members will be able to have their recommendations counted toward the ballot. Mark Farah, I don't know if you had any other comments on that?
I think we're all set.
Oh, Bill.
I just, a point of clarification, maybe it was a spacing out thing. The public needs to be present to participate, but the school board, budget committee does not.
The school board and the budget committee are welcome to attend. And if you're not able to attend, as some members of the budget committee and or school board may not be able to attend, you wouldn't be able to, you know, you wouldn't be able to vote or, or comment on any of the warrant articles.
But, well, well, the school board is going to meet remotely after the deliberative session, and that's where the school board will vote on the warrants, the final warrant.
Correct. But they wouldn't be able to vote, neither budget committee members nor school board members would be able to vote as a, as a member of the voting public, as they normally would be able to if they were in person.
Right. All right. Just as a member of the public, I, I don't get a vote in this in any way, shape or form, but we know there are hundreds of families that are either positive right now in our district and/or are quarantining. Under a normal election, they'd be able to vote by absentee ballot and do that by mail. We know by the nature of the deliberative session, absentee ballot just, just isn't an option. I'm a little disappointed. We're all going to be meeting in person, but sort of I am encouraged by all the lengths that the district is going through to try to minimize any potential harm for folks. I just, again, you know, almost half the electorate in the last election voted by absentee ballot. It's because they didn't want to congregate in an area with other people because of the pandemic. Absentee ballots aren't an option in this particular election. And I know there are going to be many people with pre-existing conditions and/or who are quarantining and/or are positive, who will not be able to participate or vote in this process because of the decision to do it in person. I'll leave it at that.
Peter.
So the school board after the deliberatives can vote remotely and the Budcom can vote remotely, but the citizens can't vote remotely. I thought what was good for the goose was good for the gander. I guess I'm very disappointed by this.
Well, Mr. Beal, maybe you should speak to the state about that because there, right now is not a reasonable recourse for the school board to hold a deliberative session. And unless all four towns move their voting, it is just not, it's not practical and, and there are too many legal issues associated with it.
That's not clear to me at all, Kim.
Well, it's not clear to me either, so.
I mean, the, the, the House is, is voting remotely. And they're letting us vote remotely. But you guys do, you guys do whatever you want, but it's not appro, it's not right.
Well, first of all, I don't think we could move it anyway because that hasn't even been passed and conquered, right? I mean, that's legislation that hasn't been passed yet. Mrs. Kishka and then you, Brian.
Just to be clear, the, the legislation did allow a remote deliberative, but there is no interactive remote deliberative for remote. It's every deliberative with the option that the New Hampshire state legislature passed would be in two sessions. The first one would be the school board reading out the warrants. We would take input from the electorate for a week by email, voicemail, whatever. And then at the end, the school board would read out the warrants again, would read out all the responses they got in a live stream meeting, again, not interactive. And then they would make amendments to the articles based on the input. But there is no way this year, unfortunately legally, that our voters can have an interactive remote deliberative session. We will, just to be clear, also, the, the regular second part of the town meeting, the, the elections where you go and you put in your ballots and, you know, and vote on the warrants, that is, we'll still have absentee ballots for that. That'll be like a regular election. Okay?
Yeah, Todd, I just, I just wanted to just make a comment. You know, it's been my fourth year on the board. And in four years, I don't think we've even hit 150 people to go to the deliberative before COVID. So it's not like there's thousands of people. I mean, everyone's welcome, but historically, you know, people come in and you've got, you know, you've got the board members, whether they're school board members, budget committee, you've got, you know, dedicated employees will show up. But when you look at the general public, each town has, I don't know, 12 to 15 people. That's what, in the last four years, anyway.
Why are we meeting remotely right now then? We know there's never more than 60 people that participate in this, yet we're meeting remotely because it's in the public interest.
Because it's your committee and you decided to hold it this way.
Yes, exactly.
All right, it's still a public hearing and we have someone at the podium, Mr. Collins. You're on mute.
Thank you. I just like to urge the school board.
Please state your name and your address, sir.
I'm sorry, Rob Collins, 75 Walker Road, Danville. I just like to urge the school board to consider SB2 if it does pass because it would allow them to delay the, the deliberative session and the final vote so that more people could participate. Even it might allow the board to hold it outdoors, the deliberative session, in a warmer month, April or May. And that would solve a lot of issues. More people will be vaccinated. And I think a lot more people would be comfortable coming to the deliberative session if that were the case. And it's been my experience at deliberative sessions that we typically do get between 100 to 200 people that, that do attend. So thank you very much.
Oh, Dr. Fair.
The board does not need to meet after this hearing tonight. The board does not need to meet after this hearing tonight. The board will meet on the twenty first to finalize the warrant.
Okay.
And 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 Chairman McCormick, I think that we in in the school districts, we have to deal with like teacher contracts deadlines from April fifteenth. So I I don't think that's going to work too well. Granted, we don't have authority right now, but we we can't wait those contracts.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boyle. I, are you at the podium again, Mr. Collins, or are you still have your hand up? Yep, yep.
Um, yeah, just a comment on what Mr. Boyle just said. The the teacher contracts are in both budgets, the defaults and the proposed. So that shouldn't be an issue, it shouldn't be a limiting factor.
The April fifteenth deadline, they have a deadline.
No, they they do for the contracts, I understand, but the funding is there either way. It's in the default budget, it's in the proposed budget.
Are you talking to Delib that could make it go up or down?
There you go.
Devils in the details, right, Sheila?
Okay. If there's no further comment, I am going to adjourn the public hearing. I'm not seeing any hands from the panelists. Oh, we do have someone else at the podium. Please state your name and your address.
Um, yes, hi, this is Laurie Hirschmorder, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I'm from Plas, New Hampshire. Could you clarify what was just commented at the end of this meeting? As a voter, I'm not understanding.
Specific to?
Who's comment?
Um, the two comments at the end, what did, I heard Mrs. Lowe say something?
Oh, what I said was, we can't push off a deliberative because in the deliberative, the budget can go up or down.
Okay.
So, you know, if something happens and, you know, somebody throws out, let's just say, Laurie, ballpark figure of two million dollars, take it off the operating budget, and it passes. What do we do then? Because we need to put out contracts by April fifteenth, is what Brian was trying to put across.
And current positions are funded right now in as the way it is.
No, what's funded is what the Budget Committee decided to fund or not to fund as far as positions are concerned. The school board made a motion to cut two million dollars off of a proposed, matter of fact, I do have the exact motion, whoever asked me for that. I was looking it up. Uh, let's see if I can find it now. To reduce the budget by two million dollars based on the recommendation by the superintendent on the document presented on twelve seventeen, twenty twenty, which only had positions. So my point being is we cannot have a postponed deliberative session because something may happen with that budget in the deliberative that would be after the date that we need to put out contracts. Did that, does that help, Laurie?
Thank you, thank you for that. Um, as a citizen, and and I'm just going to leave, if I may, may I comment on the FLESS program? Is that allowed right now?
Sure.
I would love for this community to talk more about diversity and our goal to increase. And and I want to comment what a beautiful program that is given to the children to have such a better view of this world that we live in. And tolerance is a core subject. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay. I'm just going to keep calling this a podium, and I see nobody at the podium. So I am going to adjourn the public hearing at eight fifty six P M.